Good, I know.
Dead ends in a couple of times.
I've been very impressed with the usage.
Yeah, right.
Maybe you should talk the, uh, the old mayors into turning that into a parking lot.
Yeah.
Come up on the sideline.
Good luck with that.
Where the building used to be.
Which building?
Where the old buildings burned down.
Oh.
Six thirty, all of the order. So if I can flash with you over the parking lot?
Yes.
Roll call please.
House Member Gillis.
Here.
House Member Hartung.
Here.
House Member Hooker.
Here.
House Member Reese Wood.
Here.
House Member Schneider.
Here.
House Member Scofield.
Here.
All present.
Next on the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
It's active.
We have a motion, the second to adopt the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. It's adopted. Next we move on to public comments. Did we have anybody in contact as concerning?
We did not.
That they would like to have public input, okay? And no scheduled appearances tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote, individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail, whereas a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes for the council meeting from July twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and bartender's license for Sarah L. Weber for Bodie Saloon, Austin C. Van Aken for the Duran Travel Stop, Jennifer Bates and Scott Mezner for the Duran Fresh Market. I see the chief was on the call, so he, but as far as we know.
Yes, yeah, all good.
Everything was good as far as background, okay? So I would like to make a motion to approve the, um, uh, consent agenda.
Do we know that everybody's good? I mean, are we just, are we assuming or do we know?
Stan did not say anything.
So can we make a contingent on the?
Not a problem, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda contingent on Stan's, okay?
Second, we have a motion, second, to approve, uh, the consent agenda, uh, to ma- and with the, to making sure with the chief that there was no issues on any of those licenses. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion's agreed to. Public hearing. Purpose of the public hearing is for a Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the Y Inn Visla?
Visla.
Visla?
Visla.
Owner Laura R. Tigan located at two oh one West Main Street. Um, of course, for the public hearing, that's the opportunity for the public to have any input. We will have discussion as a council a little, uh, later in the agenda. So anyway, for that purpose, I hereby declare this public hearing open. Did we have anybody contacts concerning this?
We did not.
That they wanted to, so no one has contacted us.
Can we leave the public hearing open long enough for me to grab my glasses?
Sure.
Because I have a hard time seeing them.
I can't see.
Not a problem.
It's tough to get a home.
Tough to get a home, isn't it?
That's your Wolf's Building?
Yes.
Yes.
When are they looking at opening?
Um, we don't quite know. For a couple of different things about what they want to potentially do there, but clearly this was still an option for them to, for the liquor sales or the wine sales. So just a side note, their, their dog is a, is a visla. It's a Hungarian pointer. So if you hear, you hear him barking over there, that's a, it's a good-looking dog.
Okay. Um, again, with no other public input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. Next we move on to the business agenda, administration, mayor's report, a couple of different things. I'd like to thank, uh, the staff and everybody who participated and, uh, including, uh, Council President Martin Ellis and our regular clerks, uh, that worked, Linda Elsner, Jan Brunner, and
Pat Siple.
And Pat Siple, uh, for everybody's effort, everybody on the staff that helped with election yesterday. I understand it went really smooth. Um, but if you have some tea balance, again, uh, we probably expect that. Of course, November will be the big one, uh, when you have a presidential race. Um, and I'm probably expecting two things, a lot of not only absentee, but obviously walk-in. And, uh, I did, I have discussed with the staff to make sure we feel like we're comfortable dealing with all that. And I think the, um, between the city clerk and the city administrator, it seems like the plans are in place that we'll be able to handle the November, uh, election. Um, the other thing I'm going to mention, everybody has in front of them a blue folder. Uh, took the opportunity myself and the city administrator, met with, uh, a representative of the Duran Swim Club. They have begun their fundraising activity for a revamped, um, and updated Duran Swimming Pool. This is the information that they have put together. It's a letter, obviously talking about that, talking about what the design's going to be and so on and so forth. Um, and this is what they're doing. They have a list of folks. Obviously, when you do something like this, you got to start out with, um, between businesses and individuals. They are dividing up that list. Um, and they're having different committees go out and meet with these folks or calling them and trying to meet with them to talk about if they would be interested in, um, uh, donating toward, uh, the brick and mortar of getting, getting the pool done. Um, I'm, I'm real happy that they're to this point. They're going to be meeting again in a week. They're trying to do regular meetings to make sure that they're, um, uh, that they're keeping, keeping up on this. Uh, obviously, as a city, we, um, discuss that anything we can do to help. The one thing about it, they donate the money to them, it's, it's a tax deductible situation, there's, uh, so on. And then at some point, if we can get that fundraising to a high enough level, the idea is, and then that money would transfer to the city and we would move forward with our plans, uh, to start, uh, doing the, the pool. Um, the design, of course, that we're using is the same one that was put together. Of course, that may change by the time you get, uh, we get closer to it, there might be some other things. But again, that's the basic one that they're promoting, which is the one that we approved here back, that the design we wanted to go with now, uh, a number of years ago. But again, it's good to see that they're getting, uh, organized with the fundraising drive. And, uh, we, uh, obviously wish them luck and we'll assist them in any way. Um, in fact, there's are a few other businesses in town that have had contacts with me and that I'm going to follow up with to, to work with, uh, those folks and, and to gauge their interest. Um, any questions? Anything else to add?
No.
So again, so this will be, you see these around town, I'll be getting out and, uh, and promoting these. So it's good to see they're moving forward. That's all I got. Anybody else, uh, any questions? Next we move on, consideration approval of anything off the consent agenda. There was nothing. What are the administrators' report?
Fewer things, um, a little later on in the agenda here, we're going to be talking about, uh, both the quick trip agreement and our agreement with the school district. I just wanted to apologize upfront for, so basically those are on your desk, they're all finalized. I think I said I was going to try to get those to you Monday. Uh, just did not quite work out that way, some of the work that the attorneys, yes, still had to do on them. Again, we'll go through them when we get to that point and there's not a whole lot of changes. We're calling the council basically approve the quick trip agreement a couple of meetings ago. And so again, attorney just added a couple of things, uh, just to kind of cover the, uh, uh, the city's issues, um, to make sure that we're, uh, that we don't, aren't on the bag on some things. And that's basically all that was added. But, uh, in putting those together, I mean, those are two pretty big projects that are coming together here tonight. Two things that are really going to benefit the city, I think, in the coming years, that ball field, uh, project is going to look very nice according to what the school is, is looking at and, uh, and clearly what they've done in the past with the football field and then the athletic facilities here. So that's going to be a great thing. And I think we all understand the economic development and, uh, benefit of quick trip, even though we're just, we're kind of a peripheral part of that with, uh, with basically their agreement with the county, uh, looking at being finalized, uh, Friday as they're closing. So again, a lot of, a lot of hard work over a lot of years went into this and it's kind of nice to see culminating, uh, here tonight and hopefully just, uh, just a few more minutes. Um, we were contacted yesterday regarding, uh, from, from Dig, Amanda Hurlberg with Dig regarding, uh, music in the park. Just kind of a general question. I think it actually came through, uh, Member Gillis. Uh, we had a discussion with her, um, basically, I guess, that was the first that we heard that they were looking to hold it. Um, so basically, it's not on the agenda here tonight, so we're not going to talk about that in length or discuss it from a, from a council standpoint. But I just wanted to, to kind of make you know, what I told her is, I was thinking that the council was probably in agreement that if, if they were able to work on an agreement with Heidi Stewart, uh, uh, Peppin County Health Director, Heidi Stewart, similar to the June meeting, that the council would probably be okay with that. Now again, you got two weeks to decide. If, if somebody has an issue with that, um, again, I would, I would ask you to let me know and, and we can kind of move from there. But at this point, uh, they've spoken with, with Heidi Stewart. They seem to have a pretty good plan in place. Uh, the two main concerns that I raised that I think really make this different than the June event are, we know the White Side Walls are a bigger, are a bigger group. They're going to draw more people, probably even draw some people from out of the area that we didn't have at the June. So, so that was a concern that I, again, I had just made, Heidi made sure that you're aware of that. And then secondarily, there is going to be food at this event. And that was an item, recall that, that Heidi Stewart was kind of steering away from at the June meeting. Uh, sounds like about three to four local vendors. Again, at this point, it seems like Heidi is working with them well enough and thinks that, uh, they can work through this. But again, if there's any hiccups or anything along those lines, I'll let you know. And again, if you don't think that, if I wasn't speaking for the council properly on whether or not you agree that that's a good idea, I would have you contact me. And if we need to have some sort of emergency meeting, there's certainly we can do that. You know, at the end of the day, I know there's been a lot of discussion about enforcement and things of that nature, but at the end of the day, it's our part and we can decide what goes on in it, so.
And after the city administrator and I just, I came down the same thing. If Heidi Stewart and the, um, uh, health department can agree to, to a plan, I, my feeling was that then that's, you know, that's the thing. I mean, they are the health authority in this county. Um, and, uh, if they believe that it's workable and that the, um, health department believes that they can, I would say, I've got, I, I would say we, you know, go. Don't want to speak for you folks, but that's what I feel.
I think that's kind of what we said on the last one.
Yeah.
As long as Heidi can.
They believe they have an agreement then.
Kind of like I have is just a reminder, I know we talked about, uh, when, uh, when, uh, Jonathan with, um, with our auditing firm was here a while back. He will be presenting, uh, this year's audit report at our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth. Um, we think it's going to be remote. I know he's been working from home and he's got some, some young children, so, um, I think we can make that work. And then we'll also start talking about, because it ties right into the budget process, we'll be talking about some dates for kind of outlining the budget process and when committees will be meeting, potentially meeting. And so again, we'll make sure that we're talking about that at the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
And we had discussed that earlier about, because, uh, over the next, um, couple of weeks that we, the, the department has
Great.
Talking a little bit on the budget process, so they're prepared so that we can, uh, then plan our committees to meet. Um, uh, and we can set a schedule and start at the next meeting.
Otherwise, that's all I have.
Any questions for the city administrator?
I thought I saw on the wedge today that the rural has their, rural fire has their annual meeting on the twenty-sixth.
That sounds right. And I, I just had a quick conversation with Mr. Hartung, what we'll be talking again before that. Again, primarily to make sure that we've got our, at minimum, our rental arrangement with them, like that rental agreement for the, for fire call.
They saw the, the, see, the fire district
Yep.
was on the agenda, just wondered if you were, where we were on that.
So I mean, that's where, and again, I haven't, uh, I haven't talked to Mr. Hartung for a little while, but, uh, clearly that has been on the radar to make sure that we have that discussion, uh, in advance of that meeting. I knew what he meant. I think this, it was basically postponed several times.
Um, one other thing that I, I was going to mention on the report, uh, as election season is coming up to the general election, if anybody sees, um, political signs on city property, please pull them and bring them to city hall. Uh, I'm, yesterday, somebody pulled one in Memorial Park. And I'm like, are you kidding me? Anyway, if you do see it on city property, uh, I know the guys are always checking, you know, as you guys are out and about or, um, as the city staff's out there. But if you see, um, and I think it's going to be a little crazy election season, so if you do, uh, see it on city property, pull the sign or report it down here, someone will run out and, uh, I'm a very big person, um, or do you think we should just call?
Well, boulevards are awful, also awful. I mean, I see a couple in the boulevards down here on Third Avenue. So I, I think, uh, we'll, before the election, come up here next couple of months, maybe we get some, some, uh, literature out on our Facebook pages and stuff, just kind of explaining where these political signs can and can't be at.
And do we have a local Republican, a local Democratic?
Republican.
Head, headquarters. Here's the Democratic, yeah.
Can we get a message?
They're more based on Stockholm, but there is a Pettington. I'm saying if you contacted the, maybe the head of, maybe that would help. Or maybe just to remind them that, again, public property is off limits. I think a lot of people don't think, see the boulevard as public. I think they see it as their yard, so they won't.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Are we really going to push that issue as far as the boulevard?
Well, like, I'm just talking like, like, for example, if you go down here, um, to Third Avenue West and Madison Street, it's right there. It's right literally by the stop sign. So that I would have an issue with.
Which, which I, I can understand.
Just the, the office, the, on the home side of the sidewalk is, that's all we ask for.
Yeah. And again, everybody is treated the same way, no matter, if it is, we obviously treat everyone the same. You got to remember that we're blocking visual. People, if they're coming to a road, they're going to turn and walk, and there's a sign there, they're blocking visual of little kids. Get them on your yard, not the boulevard. That would be ideal.
Aren't they supposed to be like twelve feet off the, from the curb or something like that? Isn't there?
They're supposed to be off the road right away. Road right away varies on every road, so it's just, just easy, just like, I mean, if you do that twelve feet off the curb as a general rule, that's not bad, but basically you can drive down every road in town, you can kind of see where the power poles are, where the electrical pedestals are, where the water services are. That's pretty much the edge of your road right away.
Isn't there in the statutes, uh, distance from a polling place too?
Hundred feet.
There is, yes.
Is it a hundred?
It's pretty sure.
Hundred feet.
We, we had one last night that was kind of close, so we, we measured it out and it was, we knew it was okay.
They were, they were down the corner, so. I was going to say, you might get caught if you have it in funeral. But I said, we just want to make sure we're doing everything correctly and we're treating everybody the same. And we need to make sure that we're following, uh, following the rules with the signs.
Yeah.
Okay, um, nothing else on the reports. We move on to discussion, possible action regarding the Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B liquor license to owner Laura R. Tigan and the wine at, the wine inn, Visla?
Visla.
Visla. I'm not going to be able to. At, at two oh one West Main Street. I'm just going to open the discussion by saying, uh, just to refresh everybody, since this is a new liquor license, um, again, we do have available, because we, we have available. What exactly does this give them the right to sell? So either clerk or.
Right.
It allows them to sell liquor and fermented malt beverage, beer basically, and wine and liquor.
So they're a fully functioning bar?
Correct.
Class B is what I have.
Yep, Class B is exactly what all bars have.
Didn't they used to call it combination? Did they give us a word for combination or they still use it?
Yeah.
You can still use it. Some people just don't understand that it means both the fermented malt beverage.
Yeah, every township and city has different wording for all of them.
How many licenses do we have available?
I believe it's either four or five. We have a, quite a few left.
What, what limits are the number?
Population.
It is, so then that's the state, is that a state ordinance?
It's the quota of what we had back in nineteen seventy-something, nineteen, I think it's nineteen seventy.
At one time, we were at the quota limit for a great number of years.
Yeah.
It wasn't until a few bars closed and one burned to the ground and so on, we got to the point where we had some availability. But at one time, we were at the quota by Robert.
When I started it, we were at the quota.
And you can get rid of it, but then if you, anybody ever wants one and you don't have one, you have to pay like ten grand to the state, isn't it?
Uh, that's for reserve license.
That's for the reserve license.
If you go.
You can get a reserve license, Matt.
They can get a, a reserve license.
So everything's, uh,
Good.
They're legal? Okay, we're just going to go.
There's nothing on their background.
Right, yeah.
Everything, everything checked out?
The chief does have to approve it. He hasn't looked at it since the background check was done. He does have to look at it, but if there's nothing on the background, there's a little leak.
And this is an approval with no particular date, just, because it's good for you, it don't matter, so. It's good. Well, no.
It's good till July.
July, good till July.
Yeah, we have, till July, yeah.
June thirtieth, that expires.
So they must be hoping to open by then.
That, yeah. I think that was, that was the discussion.
And we prorate the prorate the cost, or no, it's, there is no prorating for how many months, it's automatically whatever the charge is. Yep. And this doesn't fall.
And this year, I, I mean, this year, what was decided is fifty dollars for.
Exactly. We didn't.
We dropped, we dropped all.
No, 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 no. We decided that we would only do it for existing license.
Okay.
Yep.
That's fine, that's fine.
We can double check that, yeah.
No, but I, that motion was an only existing.
Only existing.
To help the existing.
You had the existing as a.
You had the existing as a lowe's homer.
Yep.
We voted, okay.
And that was just to help the existing orders that are already in. Yeah, because when they had that, had to be shut down. Um, and the intention for this place is to be more of a piano wine bar?
Correct. That was my understanding when they applied.
Okay.
They cannot do a Class C because they're not an actual winery. A winery is a Class C wine line. Because they're not a winery, they can't do the Class C, they have to do the full Class B.
Because they're not actually producing the wine themselves.
Correct. So they have to go through more expensive rounds.
Any more questions or comments or concerns? Um, are we, and again, I know that this, because it's not open yet, um, and I believe we have the right to do this, do we, can we put a, that it has to be opened by a certain point or they got to come back and ask again? Is there, I just, just ask them, we do have the right to do that since it's not an actual license, correct?
We do.
Then they have to come in and pay for it and start and, and, because it really enacts, well, we say yes to it and then they come in and pay their, and that's when it really kicks in and you have them their license.
Correct.
Are we setting a date on that or, uh, or just we're saying they basically have till June thirtieth the next year?
They seem to be in a big hurry to get the license. I don't know if that makes a difference to anyone.
Well, I would assume it's, I would assume if we're approving it, they're paying for it. I mean, that's. Well, it's only.
And, and, and the only other time here that I've seen that done is, if this were the last license, and so, and, well, are they really going to use it or how soon and us first type of stuff? So that's clearly not the case with us at the moment, so. Whether or not they, whether or not they sell any alcohol between now and then, I don't know that we really care.
I think we did that one time when we were, when we had all the licenses issued out, probably on the firewood.
The caper.
Um, because we were afraid if somebody else come into town and started something, then the license wouldn't be available when they didn't have it.
I think we made the caper case. I, I don't, not a percent, but I thought that they had to pay for it in order to keep it in their name to hold it in case they were going to rebuild. There was discussion that they were going to rebuild, so.
Okay, any more, uh, questions, any concerns about this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Class B for the wine Visla at two oh one Main Street, uh, contingent on the chief's approval with the background. Second.
We have a motion, second, to go ahead and approve the, the Class B fermented malt beverage and, uh, liquor license. Is there any more discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion's agreed to. Next we have discussion, possible action relating to the consideration of the city softball, baseball field, land sale to the Duran Arkansas School District.
Okay, so the document you have on your desk, uh, with the title of the top land sale and contribution agreement is the one we're talking about. That's the one that pertains to the, uh, school district. Uh, again, this, the vast majority of this was shared with you a few meetings back and then briefly discussed. Uh, I just want to take a little bit of time to highlight the new parts or basically the parts that were, uh, were updated, uh, both that, that we knew weren't included in that copy that you had, and then some additional language on some, uh, regarding, um, basically the fact that the, uh, site is with a former dump site. Uh, we had Weld Riley add some pieces of that. And, uh, and I think at the last one too, it did not have the date, the start or the, uh, the kind of the, what's called the drop dead date for the, uh, the SOS group, uh, the Duran Swim Club group to raise their funds, so that's, that's included in there now. So why don't you just take, uh, just a quick, quick moment to go through those items. Uh, first one on, on, under property sale on number one on the first page, uh, you'll note that there is, um, basically a first right of refusal that is attached in exhibit D. Again, I think when we talked about it, uh, with the school district, uh, um, way back in, I think it was February, March, uh, that if, for whatever reason, this project didn't go forward or they wanted to get rid of the project or the, um, uh, the land that the city would have the first right to buy it back at some mutual determined price. Um, so that, uh, that was added, that was on there before, that was added and is also noted in, um, as I said, exhibit D. Uh, the second item that was basically, or changed or updated a bit under field project, uh, I think before it was, uh, there was a, a, a no later date, then it was early August for this year. Clearly that's not going to happen, so we added, uh, or bumped that back to September thirtieth and that should be, uh, again, I, I think the school district is, is really looking at opening bids already next week. Uh, they'll be acting on, on the same contract next week. So they're, uh, they're looking to get going on this, so I think that date's going to be just fine. Um, and I also just wanted to note, and to summarize again, especially for folks at home that might be watching, that part of this agreement under the field project is that these fields will be made available for use. It's just not a school function. And again, that was a, that was a major point that the council want, uh, make moving forward, that this would be available for use, um, by, uh, by the general public. The, uh, moving on to number four, uh, just a note there that basically the school district's pledge is contingent on the local, uh, Duran Swim group, uh, raising their money by March fourth of twenty twenty-four. Um, I think you'll note that date is also in the, uh, in the swim club literature. So again, they're aware of that and they, they're, they're aware that that's part of, uh, part of the agreement. Uh, completely new item is, uh, number seven, the acknowledgement of past use of property. Uh, I spent a fair amount of time talking to Weld Riley about this, this kid, when the school district did their environmental, uh, impact, uh, studies. Um, they had a phase one environmental done and there was a re- recommendation to have a phase two done. Uh, the phase two would have basically dealt in the, the groundwater and, and, you know, we know what's under there. They know what's under there. It was an old dumping site. Um, basically in discussions with the administrative over Spike and, and ultimately their board, uh, they decided not to do the phase two. But they wanted some affirmation that again, that everyone recognized that this was a dumping site and that the city is never going to alleviate itself from any potential liability there. So basically, that's what number seven does. Doesn't say it in so many words, but at the end of the day, they know it's a former dump, we know it's a former dump, and the liability for that is, is borne by both entities. And again, we can't sell it away, you know, state law prohibits that, so just a short and sweet acknowledgement that, hey, both parties know what they're getting into. So that's what Weld, was Weld Riley's, uh, recommendation to, to have that thing.
And a couple of factors there, and we obviously knew that it was an old city dump. Nothing's been put into it for almost sixty years, I suppose, or about fifty-five at the, um, at the most. Um, it's, we've had a ball field there for forty years and never had a problem, so I don't know. And I think, um, uh, also, uh, is, um, is Council Member Gillis, he was mayor at the time when they closed the dump out here, and the one thing you've learned about is if you have a municipal dump, you're going to keep some responsibility forever. And it just is what, and that's the way that's, the laws is.
And in short, again, the groundwater is, is the potential issue. There's, there won't be ever any need to, to drill a well there. They have access to city water. So both parties are basically said, well, we're just going to move forward. It's going to, you know, it's, it's a field right now. It's going to remain a field. Nobody really cares of the fact it was on a former dump. So, um, so yeah, just, uh, so that was really the end of anything that was new in the agreement. Um, as part of exhibit A, we, uh, obviously we did add the reported, um, CSM for outlining the property. Uh, again, this was approved by council several meetings back as well. And just a reminder that, uh, you know, we're looking at basically lot one and roughly just under five acres of this encumperance. So that's the agreement, pretty short and sweet. Um, again, clearly it's been, been looked over and rehashed by court counsel. Again, clearly it's been, been looked over and rehashed by court counsel or city attorney, I should say, and, and they're happy with it. Administrator Dover Spike had a little time to look at it. He's been a little busy this week, but he didn't see anything that, that jumped out that's going to be an issue. And like I said, their, the school board's going to look at it next week, and again, there's a potential that maybe something comes up there that they have a quote unquote counter offer on something, but. I don't see anything major at this point. So again, culmination of a, I think, a pretty good project. Again, we're, for basically a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we're providing them for as part of the project, and, and just as a reminder, and for folks at home. That's basically about what we thought we were going to have to put in the single field to begin with, if we're upkeep, so. That's where that figure comes from, and then conversely, the school district is basically contributing two hundred and seventy-five thousand to the pool project. As part of this, this agreement as well, so I think it's a, it's a real win-win for both entities, and, and hopefully for the, for the community regarding the pool as well.
So I have a question backing up to number four on their sunset clause, because they put in there the, if we don't, if it doesn't reach a hundred. Or one point seven million. So what happens if July or January of two thousand twenty-four, we realize this is going to cost. A million more than what we thought, but yet we have this amount raised. Does that money stay with us, or stay with the pool? Because that's what it makes it seem like here. So if we raise.
If the, if the pool group raises.
If, if the pool group raises one point seven five.
Yep.
By this date, that money stays with us regardless if, if we discover we need an extra half a million dollars to finish it.
Well, the, the, the one, the, basically, the million seven fifty, if they raise it, no, again, it is still in, in their fund, so people are donating, and it's going into a, it's not going into the city fund. It's going to their fund. Really what the, what the data is, Matt, is really more, the school wanted an end date. They didn't want this to stretch out for, so, so basically, if they don't have this money raised by then, the school district can say, we're not giving you two seventy-five. No.
But my question is, is, you know, we're saying we think this costs two point five million dollars. So if we, somewhere between now and then, figure out, nope, it's going to cost us three million dollars, but yet we still have. This amount that they have said in here raised, it doesn't say anything in here about that that has to be built by such a date. It's saying that has to have that amount of money raised by that date.
That's, yeah, I guess, okay, quite that way, yes, that would be.
Once they raise the one seven.
So once they raise that amount, we could, we could potentially have another year if we for some reason want to raise.
If we had to do that, yeah.
Not saying we want to, I'm just.
Or probably more likely, the project would scale back. But again.
Yeah, definitely.
Your point is valid.
We're not going to get exactly, everything we want, but we can get enough to, you know, do a big, an, an upgrade that we can have a good operational pool for another thirty or forty years up there.
No matter what one our school, or else the SOS raises the one point seven million, then the school district has to.
It's committed to that.
And if they say, well, we're not going to build it for five more years for whatever reason.
Either way.
The school's still in, yep.
How much is the buyback?
We, you know, that came up a couple days, Greg and I talked a little bit about that. I mean, I, I don't think it was a buyback in a dollar. It was basically at a mutually determined price. I mean, clearly, it, you know, it's probably not fair to say, we're going to, we sold it to you for a dollar, you're going to build all this and sell it back for a dollar. It's going to be worth more. How much more, I think, would be determined, and again, we may say, we're not interested, but at least we have first refusal.
Okay, any more questions? I think a good discussion on this, I think. Get this. If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the land sale and contribution agreement for the softball field.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Reesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Next we move on, discussion possible action regarding a cost sharing agreement with QuickTrip regarding the Harding Street construction as part of the proposed QuickTrip development.
Okay, again, the gist of the agreement, oh, the cost sharing agreement is in front of you, as, as well as the utility easement that was also part of this. Again, the council approved the cost sharing agreement, basically the gist of it, meeting or two back. Well, Riley went through, and all they did was, basically, they added. Under item six, under indemnification. If you go, basically, almost eighty percent of the way down, there's a sentence that starts, nothing contained in this agreement is intended. They added all that. And then number seven, no vested rights granted, which basically just covers our tail a little bit more. It's, it's somewhat boilerplate, but again, well, it says that this is what they add to all of their, all of their contractual arrangements. And that's all they added. Everything else is exactly what you saw a few weeks back. And again, just kind of a reminder, we're estimating that the cost of the street work that QuickTrip will be doing, not, not us, we won't be, you know, sending this off to bid or anything else. But Matt will be reviewing the, the specs and the bids as they come in. But again, not to, we're estimating the project will be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which we're going to cover, it'd be a fifty fifty split with QuickTrip. And not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that, that and everything else are the exhibits, and basically the surveying apps and the recording pieces that, again, we've already approved. So at this point, this should be good to go.
And, and then also, could you explain about the utility easement, what it means and why do you.
You don't, I'm going to turn that over to Matt.
Okay.
Um, the utility easement, so the city decided not to move its infrastructure, water and sewer. QuickTrip is actually in the project, going to put a new water main in under the parking lot. So the utility easement, basically, our utilities are going to stay exactly where they are. Which is currently under Hardy Street. So this easement basically gives us a thirty foot wide swath. To go in there and conduct our business over top of our, of our utilities. Gives us the right to go in there and clean it and, and be on the property. Gives us the right to go in and fixing leaks, dig anything up, do anything without getting permission from, from the property owner. This, this easement stayed with the property now for life, regardless who owns the property as well. It's just going to be a plotted utility easement for us to go in there. Basically, do anything we need to do. The original easement, you'll see it on the cost sharing project, was twenty-five foot. Today, we upped it to thirty, just to give us enough room to, if we had to dig something up, give us enough width to, to get down there and fix it and stay within, in our easement. Part of the easement states that we obviously have to repair everything back to existing, so if they got, you know, QuickTrip spec on their property, there's a. Foot breaker, a foot of rock and eight inches of concrete, well, that's what we'll have to put back in the hole. Which is no different than on our city streets when somebody digs in there. It's built back to spec of, you know, if we have a foot of rock, you put a foot of rock. If we have six inch asphalt, you put six inches of asphalt. So it, it's pretty much a standard public utility easement.
And basically, the property owner can't build anything on it.
Yep, and the property owner can't build anything on, on top of it, or do really anything in that easement either, so.
And we have other ones like this in town.
We have a few.
A few, not a lot, but we have a few other ones too.
Our, our other ones are one, are one utility easement, so when you have one utility, you can get down with like a twenty foot wide easement. You know, if you really just need ten to twelve feet on each side of the pipe, but this is a double easement, so that's why you're seeing it at thirty, at thirty feet, so.
And clearly not having to move any utilities is a big cost saving goal for us and them, so on their willingness to do this is, is another real plus of this agreement.
So we're budgeting this out of Public Works for twenty twenty-two then?
Yeah, what we're talking about, yeah. I mean, that'll be included in, as a capital project, and, yeah, we, clearly, we see some, some TIP related pieces of this. As I said, I think at the last meeting, then we'll talk a little bit about, more about what TIP is and what it can do for us during our budget meetings this year. And then clearly, before we go, you know, before we get to that point, we'll have to have amendments to the TIP district to make sure that we have, we include this cost within. And that'll have to be approved by the other taxing entities, and there's a, there's a state process.
So in the end, we expect to recover what we spent to the TIP.
Clearly, again, I think as I said at the last meeting. If we really think this is going to be roughly a million and a half to two million, roughly, if we, you know, twenty-two or twenty-three to twenty-five per thousand. They should be kicking in about fifty thousand dollars a year, so this would pay back in three years, which is really good.
And that's something we can do with the TIP that we have.
Correct, exactly.
And without having any issue. Any more questions? Any more comments or concerns about this? Again, as we said, it sort of just finishes off what we've already been through, gets all of the i's dotted, the t's crossed, and. Obviously, been reviewed by corporate council, by, by city, by, by council, by city attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve the cost share agreement with QuickTrip.
And through the utility easement.
And the utility easement, yep.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the cost sharing agreement along with the public utility easement with QuickTrip. Is there any more discussion? Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Councilmembers Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Reesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartum.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Next up, discussion possible action regarding updating the vacant building ordinance. You can see the, the bullet points there that are, this was discussed at Economic Development Committee. And is now coming forth to the council. And I don't know if. Councilmember Schneider, who's the chair, wanted to start, or if you wanted to start.
If you want her, obviously, I just want to start real quick, and just, as I put in my, the medal that I included, I want to make crystal clear that. What we're talking about here tonight isn't, we're not voting to make any of these changes. To change any ordinance that we have, we have to go through a process, including public hearings, so. Basically, what we're talking here tonight, that if it's the council's consensus to move forward with this, we can move forward. For these, several of these items that, that we talked through at Economic Development, so with that, I'll turn it over to her.
And some of them are all of it, I mean, if we decide, it doesn't have to be all, it's whatever we decide, so. So we had a long discussion. We've obviously had some ups and downhills with this ordinance. I think other communities have really wanted our input on our ordinance, because we were one of the first around to do it. But obviously, in recent times, we've kind of come against some resistance, I guess, to it. So we kind of wanted to shore some things up. So these are the four basic things that I kind of came up with, and as a committee, we came up with. The easy ones, obviously, the clarifying of the storage to support another business rule. That discussion was, I guess I'll refer to A business, Shaw's Gas is a business on Main Street, and they have a storage on Main Street. That being what that rule is meant for. You know, you should be able to have a storage unit if you have another building. Travis, if you had wanted another building, you could do that. But I wanted to clarify that you can't have a business in, in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, and use a building here as storage. So that was kind of that clarification. If you want to buy, buy storage for your building in Eau Claire, you should get a, a storage unit, not an actual building in downtown Durant, so. So that's basically what that was. We wanted to clarify, give a little more clarification to that, so people aren't using that. The, we'll, let's do the fee structure right away. Currently, we are at five hundred and a thousand. My suggestion is to go from the thousand up to a five thousand at the end. At some point, I think buildings downtown, I don't know how long you guys have been looking at the same empty buildings for ten, fifteen, twenty years. At some point, we have to have some way to get people to put their buildings up for sale if they're not actually going to do something with it. It's not fair to Travis Hooker to run a business downtown and have a building next to him that hasn't had anything done to it in twenty years. It's not fair to the courier, courier wedge to have a building downtown and have something not done to the building next to them. It doesn't help their property value. So the city's job, I feel, is to figure out a way to either help a building owner go forward. Or to help them sell their building if they're not going to do something with it. So the fee structure, obviously, a thousand dollars, I mean, you, that's basically a storage building right now. I mean, you can't find storage in anywhere for a thousand dollars for a year, so. So the increase of the fee, that was kind of my thought process of that one, and I don't know what other businesses put into their building a year, but. My rough estimate that I put into mine is around five thousand dollars a year in maintenance. Then as far as the vacant buildings. A little clarification for the for sale part of it. I don't think a sign in your window saying it's for sale is legit. I think it needs to be, if you're actually on our vacant building list. It should be listed through a licensed real estate agent. If you want to not pay the fine, I think you should have to have your building listed at a price that is. Going to sell at, not at a price you, you're ballooning your head, you think it's worth. I can't list that out as pizza for a million dollars just because I don't want to sell it and get out of the fight. So that's basically where that one comes from. So I would like some clarification on that ruling, basically, and input from the rest of you guys that weren't in those committees. And then the other one is, we currently have a few businesses in town that claim to be running a business. There's one for sure way to, to make sure they are, is you have to have, every business has, I have a federal ID number and I have a seller's permit. You have to pay somebody sales tax. You have to have numbers. So as a city, I think it's not, it's not a bad thing for us to ask for those numbers. I mean, I would give up my numbers, well, we do actually when we fill out for, Travis gives them when he gives his, his liquor license, he has to do all that, so. It'd be a good way for us to be able to make sure they're actually legit running a business. There's been a few businesses downtown that have, that opened their doors selling things, but aren't they an actual business? So I don't know about you, but if I'm paying sales tax, I think every business that's selling something downtown should be paying sales tax. I mean, it's not fair to me, Travis does that, other businesses do that, and then have a guy selling stuff out of his building and not collecting sales tax. Or collecting it and not paying it in, so.
Question, heard.
Yeah.
So if a person gets the. F I N number, whatever. And he's classified as a business, does that mean that he can open one day a week, or two days a week?
Well, that's what we kind of discussed in the past about business hours. Those are things you can clarify in here, you know, holding business hours. I mean, what are your, what do you consider business hours? For me, my business is not during the day, you know? Travis is open during the day, but his business is mostly night. My business is mostly night, so I went to just nights. Holding regular business hours, a set set of hours, you know, does it have to be forty hours a week? I don't think that's what it has to be. I think it has to be, I'm open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, four days, that's my hours. They have to be set, so. You have to be trying to run a business. You know, it's not fair to, you know, Sandy down at Stardays, running a business in that building. I mean, I give her all the props in the world. She, she's running a heck of a business down there, bringing other people in. That's what we want to bring to town, people that want to get into an old building. Do a little fixing up, run a business out of it, and move our town forward, not pull us in reverse, so. And is this the exact way to do it? I don't know. I think all of our minds come together more, I think. I don't think I necessarily want us to agree on all this right now. I, I think I want you guys to go and think about it more and have another discussion later about it. This isn't something we're going to enact and it's going, going this year, it's for next year. So I would like to do it right now, do it correctly now. So. We can just discuss here now a little bit and then at another meeting come back and discuss a little more. But. I think if we put our minds together, we can put something together that's done correctly the first time now. So.
Herb, I generally like the direction, what you're talking about. Just to go back, in September nine, in September two thousand nineteen, the council met and on a four to three vote, we allowed one building to spend a thousand dollars fixing up his building instead of paying a thousand dollar fee. When we send out the letters to vacant building owners in a month or so, I'd expect that each owner who wasn't, who was not afforded that option will be asking for it this year. Did the committee discuss if they would recommend waiving the fee and move spending that fee amount on their building?
We did discuss it. I didn't give it much time, I guess, to discuss. I guess you kind of cross that bridge if you come to it. I mean, I foresee that being probably an issue. But the discussion we had more about was less about this coming year, the one we're about to send out, and more about fixing the problem for the next ten years and making sure our buildings start to hopefully move or something happens.
It's probably, I think you've said this, it's probably fair to say that allowing someone to spend that money, which they should anyway, to fix up their building. We'll make it go away, you just spend that money. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like it gets us where we're trying to go, doing that.
Yes. I think we, I think we all as a council learned something and I honestly got, I was on, I was on the other side of that vote the last time. And I still left here happy because I, we had a discussion, we all walked out, we pretty much agreed to disagree with the ones that were on opposite sides and that was the end of it. Yeah. So that's kind of, I was, I was happy with that discussion and that's why I come forward with this now pushing it because I think we've learned something from that, all of us. And I think, not that we can't have a heart, not that we can't help another business out if they're, if they're actually going to be doing something. But we can't let them out of an ordinance when the ordinance says what it says. I mean, it's just what the ordinance says. If we start letting, if we start letting it go, then the next guy has the same, the same recourse of what, what are you going to do?
Precedents.
Yep. So, so I think we all learned a valuable lesson. I mean, four of us have been on council for a very short period of time. So, I mean, I think moving forward, we're in a good place. But. I think if you guys want to discuss some tonight, we can. I actually would rather see you guys write down notes and think of anything else you might want to see in there and then have a real discussion at another meeting.
What I, what I was proposing to you, you're right about the opportunity to sort of take a look at this and obviously you presented what the committee said. And then, and let's say, let's bring it back as an agenda item. And then at that point, if we feel like there's, that we've got an idea where we want to put together the changes in the ordinance and have the public hearing and go through there, I think. And again, the consistent situation with still the plan of trying to, going to make these changes, it's for the next go around, so it's done by the end of the year. So when the, when the new year starts, this is how the ordinance is going to be.
And I know people say government drags things out, so this kind of looks like we're dragging it out, but I want to do it right, correctly this time. So. I think we did a really, I think this turned out really nice and then all of a sudden, a year and a half later, we're like, wait a minute, you start seeing the gray areas. So I think now we've learned enough as individuals where we might actually be able to read through some of those ideas and come up with new ideas to fix those areas.
Closing loopholes.
Yep, closing loopholes.
Two, two things real quick, Herb, the fee is right now is five hundred thousand. What are you proposing?
So it's, yeah, it's five hundred.
Five hundred first year, thousand?
Yep, and I'm proposing the thousand and the five thousand.
Thousand and five thousand?
Yep.
Didn't we talk about putting a, a, a?
An interim year, we had talked about.
A three-year schedule. Five hundred, a thousand, three thousand, five thousand?
Yeah, it's a possibility. Just say, so, so let's still step up, but.
And honestly, those things are all just what we threw together.
Dematics.
My idea was thinking stores, what does storage cost? If I'm running a business downtown, what's storage cost, you know? I mean, those kind of things. It's like, if you're running something somewhere else, what's storage cost? If I own a building downtown and you're charging me a thousand dollars and I'm living in Eau Claire running a business, I'll charge, give you a thousand dollars every year for storage.
Yeah, I agree.
I can store a pile of stuff in there. So we don't want people from Eau Claire using buildings for storage during, we want people from Duran running businesses in Duran. So.
One last thing for me that I'll stop, the, the, if someone listed for sale, I, I'm thinking of a place a couple of years ago that was for sale, not in the MLS, clearly inflated. Who makes that determination? The Realtor and, and?
So my thought process was, once they're on this list where we're sending them a letter, they're officially in our wheelhouse, which means the Realtor, the owner, and the city, come up with a reasonable price for their building.
Well, it's also, it can also be like even through like a bank, a bank is going to do an appraisal. They're only going to give you eighty percent of what they feel that building is worth. So there's another entity that we can use a number from.
Yeah, we just can't have buildings being listed for two hundred and twenty thousand when they're worth forty at best. I mean, we got a couple of buildings in town that are probably not even worth the ground they're on. And that's part of the, that's part of that problem. So.
Well, yeah, but I don't think the city wants to get into crisis buildings and.
No, but that's.
Doing that. So.
But we do apparently have.
There's other ways that we can find out if the crisis inflated without us.
That's ultimately why I think Herb is saying they have to be, you know, through an actual Realtor. And that was kind of my holdup initially. I was like, there's a lot of people now that sell things themselves online without the Realtor. But then, then it involves like, well, then we'd have to be checking up like, is this priced fairly, is it this or that? Versus if we know they're listed through a Realtor, it's probably going to be a legit price.
There's two signs on buildings right now that are on that list that I have tried calling the phone number for the rent and for the for sale and you cannot get anybody to call you back ever. So. So is it for sale? No. And as far as the for sale part, I'm just saying that, let's just say that high realty lists a building and they come up with a price. I think we have a visual on that price to be able to say, well, you're taxed at a hundred and five thousand and you got it listed at two-ten. It's worth what you're taxed at at best. I mean, you can't, unless you're running an actual business out of it, you know, Herb, Alex's pizza is worth, the building is worth what the property tax says. My business is worth whatever my business, my books will tell you what the business is worth. So. That's what I'm saying. I mean, you can't just sell a building for whatever you think. The blue sky is not, you can't sell that. So.
Just a bit of clarification on that one too, is, so there's nothing that says anything about you're exempt because you have it for sale in the ordinance. We kind of adopted that, that first year. I think we had a, at least one property that said that they were. And then again, the building we're talking about, now I kind of came up with that. And so I think we just need to clarify that a little bit more and we can work through that. Because we know what we're trying to accomplish. It's just a matter of, yeah.
And obviously, I think, I don't think any of you here, if a person's trying to sell a building for a legitimate price, I don't, I don't want to find them for, I don't want to give them a fee for something that they're trying to sell at a realistic price.
And clearly, they're retaining the building to make sure they can sell it. So that's, that's the ultimate goal.
That's what it is, yeah. I don't think we want to keep taking money just to take, we don't want their money. We want the building to go forward one way with them owning it or somebody else owning. We need that. So.
And just if I could address Mark's earlier question, we know the property we're talking about and, and, you know, we talked, I don't know if we talked at the community level, but I think Herb and I talked personally on this one. That clearly, if people come in and say, well, I want the same deal you gave that guy last year. No, that guy's hard to get a hold of. And I have not heard whether or not he's done any of this, but I think it's fair to say he has not. So, bottom line, our answer would be, you know what? No, we're not going to let you do it because it didn't work out very well for us in the first place. So we're just not doing it.
Yeah.
So we thought that might work. Clearly, it didn't. And so we're moving on. So please don't even ask because we're not going to do it.
Okay, good.
And then if somebody decides not to pay because they think that's a farce, I mean, that's just, that's something we have to deal with in our end. I mean, just like anybody else would if somebody didn't pay their, their fees. So.
Okay, all right. Any, any other questions tonight or, or discussion concerning this? Otherwise, as we said, opportunity to think about, the information's been presented. We'll put it on a future agenda and with, with the deciding about moving forward then with a public hearing to actually make the changes in the ordinance. Okay, we'll move on to the police department. The chief was supposed to be here.
Yeah, the chief, yeah, the chief wanted to be here. He got called out tonight. I was just checking. I did not see the other message back.
That he came back. He does have the, of course, the written, everybody saw the, the log and stuff for this month. I'm assuming we'll get some sort of a, if there was anything else that he needed to report on, if the information needs to get out, he'll either get it out to us beforehand or at the next meeting. If there was anything beyond the, the incident blotter that we get, we need to do that. So. Okay, next we move on to the fire department.
Chief King is on vacation and he did not file a report. So I anticipate we'll have one at the next meeting.
Ambulance, written report, everybody's, maybe had the chance to look it over, quite a bit of stuff that happened with the, with the department. Beyond just between training and everything. So a good report here. And as we said in July, we did meet a hundred percent of our nine-one-one calls.
It was thirty-six of thirty-six nine-one-one calls and they made four out of six facility transport.
I think there were two for two for facility transports today. So.
And the one thing we had mentioned, of course, at the last meeting was, we did have a meeting with the head of Advent Health and the director of nursing and myself, council president, and the ambulance director back in July. And it was a great opportunity to go over some things. And I think obviously, making sure that relationship is solid and it's always improving. I think that that's important. So, and he also obviously included that in his report.
Fair to say that, that, you know, Mike just, Mike just hit the ground running and I do think that the report notes that he's, he's really turned the job a lot.
Any questions on ambulance? Hearing none, move on to public works utility. Anything from the engineer?
I hope, just still working through the cemetery stuff. The firm is still waiting here on the C D B G grant, which again, we're not really scheduled to hear anything till close to the end of September. So no news is good news as of right now. We're working on some G I S stuff for us, updating that, the next phase of the G I S program. Other than that, pre-stated schools.
Once we get a, a bunch of the stuff, the stuff that we have on our G I S, I mean, we've got water sewer, all that stuff on there, correct?
Water sewer and storm, yes.
Sometime. Maybe, I know we saw the, what it looked like, sort of before we started. I don't know, maybe sometime at a future meeting, just show us when it's, you know.
Yeah, actually.
Once you, once you get stuff on, when, I, I thought that might be interesting for the council and myself to see.
You want to counsel me? Because I was definitely going to do it at Public Works during the budget process. But if you want to have full counsel, we can most definitely do that full counsel.
We should do a counsel.
Okay, yeah, just to show what, obviously, and what, obviously, all the time and effort and restarters we put into this and exactly, well, how useful it is to the staff. I think that that's important.
Not a problem.
Okay, nothing else on engineer? Now we'll move on to the public work utilities monthly reports. Superintendent Gillis?
A couple of things here quick. The wastewater shaving plant, a week and a half ago, we had an electric motor start on fire. Actually did have flames shooting out of it. It's a good thing we have some trained fire professionals on staff to take care of that. We didn't have to call the fire department. We got the motor fixed. It was actually cheaper buying one than it was to rebuild the old one. So that is actually back up and running. The water department, leak detection was all completed. Behind the Wolf Building or the Wyman Bischla, is it called now? That was old galvanized pipe. Since it was five o'clock at night, the entire pipe was bad going into the building and going out to the street. We were able just to barely find some good spot to tie into. Talked to the property owner. We are going to just dig that all the way up to the main and run a new line from the main into the building. And we're going to cochar that with the property owner and pay for their half and we're going to pay for our half. So. Should probably cost each of us around two to three hundred bucks to dig the rest of that. And we already got to put the blacktop in the, in the curb and, and the concrete anyway. So. So we're just going to do it and do it right. Being that it's galvanized, I'm sure there's a wet loose neck in there. And I'm not going to put new concrete stuff on in a year and have the rest of it rot out. So. You'll be seeing that done hopefully here in the next couple of weeks. I ordered some, some repair clamps and some fittings and I'm just waiting for all that stuff to come in before we do it. Again, we're, we're using a lot of water at the water plant. We're, some days pushing four hundred thousand gallons a day. Everybody's watering their lawns pretty harsh. So we don't believe we have any leaks. Did have, like I said, the leak detecting, the detecting company actually came back a week and a half later just to verify that as well. They ain't finding anything either. So pretty much I'm just attesting it to all the water sprinklers. We do have eighty to ninety garden meters in town. So we got a lot of sprinkler systems in our community. So we're monitoring that on a daily basis. Upcoming projects, LED street lighting. New LED lighting has been ordered for Second Avenue East, then Main Street from Second to the stoplights and then the River Walk. That was all budgeted under the lighting for twenty-twenty. So the LED lighting has been ordered. And then at that time, when they come to do the new lighting, we will fix whatever's burnt out in town at that time. So I know there's a fair amount of burnt out lights and some blinking ones and some ones that need attention. Just waiting to get that all done at one time. So I don't want to pay extra fees to come to town and mobilization and things like that. So, so that's coming up here. Hopefully, the LED lights are ordered. This year's been a weird year when it comes to ordering stuff. You can get some stuff you can get tomorrow, some stuff can't get three months. So. You know, I, I'd like to tell you it's going to be here next week or the week after. I just, I can't do that. So. So that's the next upcoming project that we're, we'll be working on. And seal coating, seal coating the streets. The county has tentatively scheduled that to start August twenty-fourth. They're going to start the week of August twenty-fourth. They don't necessarily be in very end on the twenty-fourth, but they'll be starting their operations on the twenty-fourth of August. So we'll fall somewhere in that two-week window that they're open to.
And which streets are we doing this here?
We're renewing Eighth Avenue West, Seventh Avenue West from Prospect to Madison, Third Avenue West from Prospect to Main and Second Avenue East from Prospect to Main. And that is all I have. Unless you have any questions for me.
As I said, we had mentioned the other day, I had a resident ask about, like on Off Street, we've got some places where we've got Crush Rock because of some digging we've had to do. What are we expecting to get those, get those paid?
Talked to the county, they're not planning to get their payroll until probably the end of September, middle to end of September before they're going to get their payroll and do some of that.
Any questions for public, you, public works or?
Is there any way to get, I mean, do we have to wait for the county? I just know some certain people that are pretty hot about it.
Unless you want to pay more money, you don't have to wait for the county.
Raise your hands. Oh, yeah, we had.
The one on Off Street, I know, I know you're all, everybody's worked up about the one on Off Street. That one, the intent of that one was to never black that, top that before September. The, there was some severe settling issues up there and we needed to wait all summer. The best thing to do is to wait all summer and let that settle out as much as possible. If we had put blacktop on that in the first month, I guarantee you, come, come next spring, we'd have a swell right down through the middle of the new blacktop. So you, you need to let that stuff settle out, especially when you're talking about the depth of, you know, eight feet in the ground is that water main. It's going to take all summer for that to settle out. It ain't like we're going to dig it back out and repack every two feet like we should. So it's, there literally needs, needed that, that summer of traffic and water to settle it out as best as possible. I, I know it's not, I know it's not ideal, but in, in the long run, it's going to be way better for the city than if we would have put blacktop on that in the first month.
I thought we talked at one point, maybe Matt, we, it's probably best, maybe we send a letter out to those people again. Just, clearly, there's, there's a reason for our madness here. It's not just we're lazy or cheap or. So maybe that's just worth a, a letter that may help Terry with some of the people up there that may have issues.
Is there anyone in particular?
It's not just the law, because I have, I have someone else.
Right. Again, not, obviously not on camera, but if you wanted to share those people, we could certainly, maybe it's worth a phone call to them and say, hey, we're going to send a letter to all the neighbors as well.
Or post that explanation on it. We can post it on Facebook, H D, I can call them. I have no problem calling. We can post it on Facebook, though, I can call them, I have no problem calling them. I know of the one, if he telling me of the other ones, I'll physically make contact with them, doesn't matter to me.
What happened down to the Shaw's extra building?
That, that was their sewer lateral that they were talking about replacing back in the spring, they just finally got around to fixing it.
There's a lot of diggers, huh?
Yeah, their sewer lateral comes all the way down angle from their building, goes all the way up to the intersection of Fifth Avenue, so, pretty long stretch.
Any more on the behind Stargazers?
Uh, the, he has signed a contract with American Water Works. He's going to fix the existing wall that's in there. He did not want to do a recommendation of, of walling off the actual building and filling that with sand. His exact words to me, well, if the city's not going to pay for that, I'm not going to do it. So he's going to fix the existing walls that are in there. He has a contract signed with American Water Works to get that done.
One second, sign, we need to pull those barricades. Any other questions, again, for public works utilities?
What's going to happen with, with the damage that's already there? The sidewalk separated from the curb, and it's just stayed the way it is, and it doesn't get any worse? Or is fixing the wall going to solve the problem eventually? I'm assuming not.
No, the curb, the sidewalk's going to stay heaved up. The American Water Works guy tell, is telling them that the sidewalk's not moving, that the curb is sinking. You know, and I, and I tell them, well, if the curb is sinking, how come there's not a puddle of water there when it rains every time? And the curb's actually not lower than the rest of the road and the rest of the curb. I don't know, twenty years of experience doesn't venture you in, in a lot of places, I guess, so.
In, in short, man, it's, it's going to stay the way it is until.
In short, in short, it's going to stay the way it is unless city council, or unless the council wants to, to send a letter and push the issue, I guess, for lack of a better term.
At this point, we're not deemed against a safety issue.
It's not a trip hazard.
It's not a trip hazard for the people walking down the sidewalk, you know. So, it's not, it's not like a handicap trip hazard. It's not a trip hazard for just the random citizens walking down the sidewalk, it's just between the curb and the sidewalk that, that is the issue, so.
Okay, any other questions? Next, let's pay the bills. As we said before, the next council meeting, we're coming up on the twenty-sixth. At that point, we'll be making plans for committee meetings. Are there any other committee meetings at this point that we need?
We still have some, some follow-up to do on our loan program issues, so they could be.
That would be it.
Ground pads up. I got it.
I'll replace, I'll replace him with an electric car.
You voted last night, you got free one.
He did vote to vote absentee, so.
That is a question I have, so now, once you vote absentee once, do you have to continue for the rest of the year?
No, I just voted.
Only if you put on when you were elected, how many years.
So, but now, I think I did for all years, so now I can't come in.
If you contact me ahead of time before I'm in the ballot.
You can still drop him off, though.
Right.
Yeah, you can bring it in there. Well, he just has his mother in law, so it wouldn't drive him, election day.
They had BM at eight o'clock last night, right?
But if he's like a different, just let him know that.
Oh, I know.
I just had a guy down today, he's going to cut two of the make curies in front of that house down, not the thing one, though. I'm not touching the thing one, I don't care what they say.
At some point, we're going to put that.
I think if you want to talk about one, that's a huge street.
When I'm taking down two, one, I'm taking.
Because I'm making a change, yeah. It's, it's winterized, and we could just bring, you know, put the idea that maybe just probably talk about it.
What do I want to do? He's going to, next couple of weekends here, he'll come down, him and my nephew are going to.
Winterize this one, shouldn't.
My nephew doesn't walk, and it's not, it's not a lot of work. They contract through Excel. So he's doing it outside.
That was for him. So, so basically, as part of the budget process, we agreed to pay them for the, all the baskets out here.
It's our membership.
And, and, and also, we've been giving them, they should be five hundred dollars a concert, so. Clearly, we're paying them for June.
Two lives, that's two.
Obviously, July was canceled, we're not paying for that, if they held one for August.
I've got pictures of that, but it's like, just figure out.
So much it is.
I'll make a motion, we pay the bills. Second, Herb gets it.
We have a motion and second to approve the vouchers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
All in favor?
Again, next meeting coming up on August the twenty-sixth. Otherwise, motion to adjourn?
Make the motion adjourned.
We have a motion and second to adjourn, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no? We are adjourned.